Everybody, welcome to the City of Utica Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Emily Sizemore, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Sikora.
Here.
Terrencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. To absent five present, we do have a quorum. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor to anyone who would like to speak to council for any item on the agenda. Everyone will be allotted three minutes to speak. We'll also have a period towards the end of the meeting for anyone from the public that would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda. So is there anyone that would like to, if you're on the agenda?
This is.
Then absolutely. Just step up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name's Michael Yevko. I own Host Utica at 7759 Auburn Road. Coming up here to discuss the lease extension for Jimmy John's Field, I am asking that the city does not continue with that extension and considers a different proposal for myself and my partners. I will offer the city $50,000 a year for the same rights that are established for Jimmy John's in their lease agreement. I believe Jimmy John's has no intention of fulfilling the lease agreement. They developed their building that they wanted to do seven years after the original contract was signed that didn't meet the needs that they agreed to when they originally signed the lease agreement. They also have the land up for sale, so they have no intentions of continuing to fulfill their obligation. They will continue to use that space as a parking lot as long as the city will allow them to do so. A little bit of facts, the city is losing out on maybe $93,000 a year in property tax revenue just on parcel C. Well, they're paying on parcel C now, but also they have the exclusive rights to use the parking lot north of parcel C, which is additional four or so acres. They also don't pay any property tax on area A, which is what Jimmy John sits on. So in totality, because of the agreement that the previous administration made, the city's losing out on about $223,000 a year in property tax revenue that they could be, they should be, I mean, getting back through a lease agreement in some fashion. $30,000 a year is nothing, and I'll do $50,000 a year right now for the same obligation. So as far as the restaurant owner goes, I know all the Jimmy John's employees that they're either told or directed to park down towards the downtown version, that's along Van Dyke, which takes up valuable parking spots for our customers. They walk past my building every single week during the ball season. So Jimmy John's Field is doing nothing to benefit the taxpayer as far as generating revenue or supporting the businesses that are also in proximity to them. And I found that that is a reoccurring theme amongst most of the business owners.
Three seconds.
Thank you. Well, that's all I got. So if you accept, if we start negotiations for my $50,000 a year, they're proposing two years, I'll go with the two years as well in conjunction with also what I want to talk about later on. That's $40,000 more in revenue for the city to use as you wish for that lease agreement. So.
Three minutes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, Ed Vance and I brought Davis. I wouldn't disagree. Jimmy John's not doing what they were agreed to for that particular parcel. It's been a thorn in my side the entire time. I've been up here for multiple council meetings. The council's done great with not allowing them to do what they, you know, certain building plans and things like that, but, I mean, they don't do much to try to help the downtown businesses. The whole idea, part of it was to bring the people into downtown, make it a whole evening thing. People go there, people leave. That's it. I mean, any of you guys see a coupon deal in any place? Get a beer at Steampunk, you get a dollar off, anything? Nothing. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience there would like to speak to council? All right, for the record, there's no one else that wishes to address council at this Next on the agenda is consent business. I'd be looking for a motion to approve all items listed under consent.
Salute.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Sikora, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. No unfinished business or correspondence. Moving on to new business, we have the Lucky Leprechaun Run, and I believe we have Mr. Rob Pro here.
Yep. Hi, I'm Rob Pro. I'm with Utica Lions over at Bernie. We're asking to do the Leprechaun Run again on March 16th. It's a Saturday. We will be following the same course. We will be looking to change the course to do after it gets approved the following year to go do the dog park for what saves off, but at this year, we still have to follow the same course. We will be sending out the letters, but after feedback last year, we'll make sure we send out the letters much closer to the date. We'll put more signage out, and we will meet with the three gentlemen over here in February.
March 16th, that was the day.
March 16th, it's a Saturday.
Got it. And Rob, I'm sorry, you're going to keep the same courses last year this year?
Yes, we couldn't get it certified, so we have to keep the same courses we had last year that goes down. We'd like to move it off of CAS next year because that's a busy street, but we couldn't get that new course certified this year, so we have to keep the one that is certified as a 5K.
Got it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Lucky Leprechaun Race for the 14th year on March 16th.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Sikora, any discussion from council? I'll just say real quick, love the event. You know I'm there every year.
Yeah, you're there.
It's just a total party atmosphere downtown.
And we're hoping that the businesses will be more able to do it later because last year, it was cold out, but we're hoping to bring more people into the businesses, so make sure you're there earlier because Shamrock was the only place that was open, and it had a line out the door.
So we got a few of our businesses here tonight, so open up, guys and gals.
So I would open up at least at noon because the race is over. So that's one thing we do this Leprechaun Run is to support the local businesses. So, you know, it's a fun run, and really the Lions, all we do is try to raise awareness to the city on that event.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Can't wait.
I can't wait.
I gotta get all my green gear out, all right? Next on the agenda is phased downtown development. Mike from Host.
This is Charlie Van Camp. He'll be coming up as well in a moment. So if you'd like to reference the map that I provided to council, I believe the City of Utica and its residents all desire to have a vibrant downtown, and a lot of the concerns have always been, well, since I've been around and probably before I've been around, is parking. And I believe that my phased development will remediate that concern as well as connect the downtown, the historical downtown, to Jimmy John's Field with activity that all residents can participate in and will ultimately, I say, maybe mayor or be someone to Rochester. I believe Utica has a ton of potential if the right people put it in place to develop it the way that needs to be done. So with that said, I propose a phased development. In some discussions with Mayor Gus and meetings I've had with him, he's expressed that the city may consider relocating the city buildings from its downtown location to, on the map you'll see on parcel one, by Pioneer Dog Park. I understand that that area is contaminated, and there may be more flexibility to move a city building over there than other areas. In doing so, there could be a trade-off as a result of us developing and building that building on behalf of the city. There'd be a trade where we would retain pieces of city land to continue the development that's proposed here. First, the first phase would be to obviously move the city buildings to parcel one, and then after that is completed, we would move to parcel five, and we would demo the city buildings and take up Memorial Park, and we would create a dual-purpose parking deck and retail space. So the first floor would be retail. It would constitute about 100,000 square feet of retail space, similar to if you've been to the Z Lot in downtown Detroit. They have an alleyway that goes in between, I guess, two areas of the parking lot. So that alleyway would run parallel to 159 and would be a vibrant space for residents as well as additional restaurants or other retail spaces along that walkway. This would also block in or encapsulate downtown Utica so that when you're standing on Auburn Road slash Main Street, you wouldn't see Hall Road and all the noise that comes along with that car traffic. Then after we build that parking deck, which would also help Jimmy John's with their parking as well as the rest of the city, we would like to move Memorial Park on two and potentially three, if we can come to agreement with Jimmy John's Field, on a repurpose for parcel three or parcel C, as most of you guys know it as. And then parcels two and three, we would develop next. Like I've said, Memorial Park, we would like to move to parcel three, and then that gravel lot above it, we would like to make it a multifamily development as well as a boutique hotel, similar to, I personally love the Shinola Hotel, so it'd be a similar aesthetic. It would constitute about, be about 140 rooms, and it would also have a retail space on the first floor, convention center slash restaurant. I know that Mayor Gus has expressed his desire to have a convention center down here that businesses can do business and host their conferences in downtown Utica. And then the multifamily development, obviously in order for the retail spaces to be successful in downtown Utica, we need more density down here, so that's the purpose of the multifamily development on the other portion of parcel two. And as well as the last portion of multifamily development will be on the remaining portions of parcel one that the city building does not take up. And the residents that are on parcel one will have easy access into the downtown area via the bike path that's already established. And all going well, parcel four, I understand that the goal is to move the fire department off of Hall Road so it has better accessibility to the city, so we could repurpose the fire department to be a brewery of sorts, and then the back parking lot portion could be additional retail space and/or residential space. So that's my proposal. Do we have, Charlie, I guess, if you want to come up now and express our ability to raise the financing and execute this?
Charlie Van Camp. Yeah, so Mike brought me into this. I've, you know, I personally work, you know, I'm a commercial real estate broker and developer throughout the state of Michigan, and Mike brought this opportunity to me. Mike is my cousin, and it's something that I feel I've already talked to a couple different partners that I've done multiple deals with that have shown interest, are comfortable with any possible contamination, environmental issues that would be specifically on parcel one. We've worked with states, we've done BEAs, we've done it all, so this is something that we would definitely dig our heels in and really try to come to fruition.
So I guess to add to that, we would need about one year worth of due diligence in order to cost this all out as well as find out the extent of the contamination so we can present that to our investors and raise appropriate capital in order to execute this plan. In doing so, we would provide earnest money deposit to the city. If we choose not to move forward, it could be non-refundable, so the city still benefits from one year of due diligence. So with that said, is, anyone have any questions?
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, the Shinola building that you have visioned, what parcel did you see that being on? I didn't catch that.
Parcel two. I would envision that to be on the riverside, which would be aesthetically pleasing for the guests that stay on that side as well as it could overlook the ballpark area as well and the walkway or the bike walkway. I believe boutique hotel is ideal. I mean, the Royal Park Hotel does extremely well. Obviously, it's in Rochester, but a hotel in downtown Utica is more convenient for transportation. I mean, professional athletes stay at the Royal Park Hotel in the access to 75 and 59. I actually go to Rochester College out there. It's not convenient. So I believe that putting a boutique hotel out here with a conference center would get a lot of action from businesses in the surrounding areas because of accessibility to the highways.
I love so much of this. I mean, it's amazing how a lot of this is what has been in my head since I became involved in city government. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of pieces that would have to mesh. Number one, we don't own parcel, what you're calling parcel three, what we commonly call parcel C. Jimmy John's General Sports and Entertainment owns parcel C currently. So that one is a little bit out of our hands. There's a lot of invite, I was waiting for you to address it, and you did, but I took a note here that there are significant environmental issues in the area you mentioned, parcel one, and for sure parcel two, and we don't know what you'd find at parcel five once you demoed these buildings because they've been here so long that environmental issues were not addressed in the same way when these were built. So there's a lot of mystery there with the environmental concerns, but wow, the vision that you guys have here and the ideas for reinventing downtown are awesome. I mean, I'm kind of tingling here. It's so exciting.
Yeah, and Charlie's a little bashful. He's worked with a developer that brownfield sites are his specialty, and he's not afraid of it whatsoever. So the ability to remediate these issues isn't out of his scope of work.
Another issue that I see that you would need to look into is where Memorial Park is. I believe grant funds were used to build that. The conditions of the grant funds probably do not allow us to sell that property or deconstruct that park.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as a expressors, a year's worth of due diligence to find out what's exactly feasible throughout this process, but to give us a year to figure that out, I say is nothing comparison to the seven years that Jimmy John's took to not figure it out. So some people may see this as a long shot. I've been told multiple times in my life, I got told about buying Host by three banks. I have Host. Have I done it perfect? No, but I believe I built a great building that complements the downtown, places like Vino Vibes, that builds excitement for the city. I mean, in my conversations with the gentlemen that own Mr. Miguel's about to pop up, they told me that part of their initial reason for looking at that building was buildings like Anna and I have put together, or Deanna and I have put together in Anna. So I believe we have the right mindset, and I believe that people are willing to follow in our footsteps or follow behind us or partner alongside us based on the momentum that we created so far.
Yeah, what you've, what you guys have done right up the street at Host is amazing. You've brought tons of excitement to downtown. I'm guessing that you've helped all the other businesses in the area as well, and it fits in perfectly with at least my vision of what we want to see happen down here. So, you know, kudos to you, kudos to all our business owners in downtown. They're doing a great job. Like I said, there's a lot of moving parts here. I don't think, I wouldn't recommend that we could have a motion to enter into this agreement tonight. I would definitely want our city attorney to have a look at it, be able to review it, and come up with some concerns before you even get into a due diligence period of what the stumbling blocks could be and identify those and let you know what those are. We don't want to just take your $10,000 knowing that it's not even feasible, right?
Right, and the reason I stood up earlier was if the city moves forward with starting the Jimmy John's lease, that puts a wrench in this plan, and that's why I'm willing to do $50,000 in order to move forward with the potential of this plan. Worst-case scenario, we do our due diligence or don't even get to it, and the city still makes out more money than they would if they proceed with Jimmy John's extension. And then I have a plan that I'm dealing, trying to put together, and Jimmy John's has shown that they have no intentions of fulfilling their obligation and their plan. And I pay taxes. I mean, I know I've said this before, I pay 20 grand at my building. That's potentially more than Jimmy John's Field pays on over $10 million worth of land, according to their estimates.
You're giving us a lot to think about tonight. I thought this was going to be an easy meeting. What happened to easy?
So there are many moving parts. However, based on what I'm seeing here and what maybe, you know, maybe folks you can't, you know, maybe you don't know about, so I know for a fact we're not sitting on a giant pile of money titled new government buildings, right? So if we wanted to do this, we would have to bond out for it and ask taxpayers to raise taxes.
Well, I mean, some of those are details I don't think we understand yet.
Exchange would be, I would build the government building in exchange for these properties. So instead of paying for the property, I'd pay through it through building the government building.
Yeah, but are you going to make them ugly? I'm just kidding.
What are they now?
What I'm saying is, there's no, polish a turd is not a phrase I should use on council. What's a better phrase? That's what I'm, that's just what I'm trying to get at. Never mind, I withdraw my comment.
I hate ugly. I mean, I mean, as you can see by my space, it's respectfully not ugly.
Yeah.
And I would hope, and my goal is to create spaces that would fit well and complement what we're creating in other spots around downtown Utica. And also, in executing this, it's naturally going to raise property values, which once these homes are resold, is going to raise property taxes, which is more income for the city, as well as likely push out, for example, Hogs Hollow, the gentleman there is unresponsive to buying that building. If we basically make the value of his building so great that he eventually says, I'll just sell it now, we can start developing the historical downtown to have spaces that would benefit from a downtown vicinity. As we, I'm sure we can agree, there's several businesses in that downtown vicinity that would do just fine new business outside that downtown vicinity. So I think downtown Utica has more potential and could be the downtown of Macomb County. Mount Clemens has attempted it. They're trying to do it. We originally were going to be in Mount Clemens, but we chose Utica because.
Thank you.
Because of, I mean, the council, Mayor Gus, has been very supportive of what we're trying to do here, and it's a better location. I mean, Mount Clemens is on 94, only caters to one side of the tri-county area. Utica, I call it the gateway. I call it the gateway to the east side, west side. So we're not going to put a big golden.
Put a gate or a D.
So I know this sounds ambitious, but I believe in partnership with Charlie and his resources and my vision and relentlessness for executing stuff, we could get this done.
Super excited. I'm going to move that we postpone a vote tonight to give our city attorney the opportunity to review the purchase agreement and outline, like I said, any potential obstacles.
We should involve Amanda early on, too.
And, yeah, and our planner, who's not here tonight, typically she's not here when there's nothing on the agenda for her. So, yeah, I would make that motion. I'd be looking for support.
Support.
Motion by Calendino, support by Sikora, any further discussion from council?
I wish you would come to us four months ago with this same proposal so that we would have time, you know, to make a, to make a decision at one meeting, one short meeting at that, you know, then we have time to mull it over and, you know, find things out. I just wish you had come to us a little bit sooner.
If you consider me for the lease, then you can take the extra time. Allowing me to obtain that lease helps, helps us not to be delayed by two years. So that's, I guess, the way that we can circumnavigate that issue.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. This will more than likely be on the agenda next month in some form or fashion. And how convenient, next item on the agenda is the Sixth Amendment to the ground lease with General Sports and Entertainment, Jimmy John's Ballpark.
All right. Dana Schmidt, President of the USPBL and Jimmy John's Field. Obviously, lots of discussion about this topic. So first of all, I want to say I appreciate everything that Mr. Yevko had to say and the plan that he presented. As the mayor knows, we actually, at a planning commission meeting a couple months ago, brought all of the representatives from Macomb County that we could get to discuss a revisioning of the downtown and assembling parcels and how all this could be done to try to try to have a vision and get funding in place to do that. Something very similar to, you know, wasn't mapped out, but that's kind of what we discussed, is putting together something like that. And we had indicated we were very happy to be part of participating in that process, having the parcel that we own, uh, be part of this revisioning of the downtown. And so, you know, I know Vicki Ruinsky and her whole team were at that meeting, so. I would say, first of all, we're open to being part of that with the parcel that we do own. But in the absence of having that information, um, we, our last conversation was that we were going to go back and and meet with our architect and take the site plan that we had originally come forward with to build our headquarters and make revisions to that and bring that back to the planning, bring a new concept back to the Planning Commission on our parcel. And then, um, you know, bring it back to council after that, but bring, get feedback from the Planning Commission on that. So, um, obviously, um, it is, it is our intention to develop the parcel. We did present a site plan that we had an architect do for us, and we're prepared to go forward. We're so prepared to go forward even with that plan, but understand that Planning Commission wanted something different. And so that's where we are, is going back to our architect. In the meantime, we did have the reason there's a sign there and, um, Mayor Calendrino is aware of this, and I think most of the council, is that we had hired also a commercial real estate broker that we had for six months, uh, market the property to see what ideas, different, uh, potential partners might have and developers, and we had 19 different developers come forward, three of which were serious, and, uh, two of those three had proposed hotels on that site, which we were excited about. But decided not to move forward because the flags they were talking to, um, had concerns about the location. So they didn't go forward. We had a fourth gentleman who, um, came forward shortly after that, that also wanted to partner to develop a four to five-story building, multi-use with residential on that site, and unfortunately, which we were very excited about. Unfortunately, when his engineers looked at, uh, the geotechnical information that we provided, there's 21 to 22 feet of fill on that site, and he said he couldn't pencil it out to build the kind of structure that he wanted to build to make it profitable. So, um, that opportunity didn't move forward. So that gave me concern about that site in terms of the height of building that's economically feasible on that parcel. The parcel behind that is, um, obviously on the ground lease and on the ground lease designated as parking for the ballpark. So, and that site is, I know there's discussion about, we can take care of remediating, but it is more than likely 20-plus feet of trash unremediated on that parcel, which, I don't know if that's parcel two or one on this plan. But that is, um, we anticipate that's the same thing that we found at the ballpark, which was 20-plus feet of trash. So not a solid foundation, um, on that ground. So our discussions with, uh, Michelle Bacon from Eagle, who was at that Planning Commission meeting, were that residential probably, in her opinion, could not be built on a site like that, could not have been built on the ballpark site because of the methane issues and needing to have methane gas mitigation and monitoring. And her comments to us have been, even at the parcel, that is parcel C, was she would possibly have concerns about residential at that site, although we were still contemplating options there because of the methane gas migration that's coming on to the parcel from that front parcel from the back parcel. So, you know, obviously, I can't, um, you know, say, I think all of these ideas are fantastic. In in theory, it's just whether they can actually get done, and one of the reasons why some things don't always get done are because of environmental issues are a big factor here and site conditions. So, but that being said, um, you know, our plan is, um, to have the architect give us some revisions to that plan and come back to planning with a new plan for developing parcel C. And, uh, that's why we're asking for this extension. And I did want to say, I do apologize for the comment about, uh, the employees with parking. I want to know that because we have a parking lot and we drive a shuttle to it to pick employees up. And so when they're not parking there, that's something that I'm not telling them, and I'm the person that's telling them where to park. And they get information in a packet, and we have a map that tells them off of Chapperton where they're supposed to park, and we do drive a shuttle there. So if they're not doing that, then obviously that's on me to be reinforcing with them that because they specifically have information that they're not to park in downtown or at the library, City Hall, et cetera. So, you know, obviously, that's for me to address, but that they are told to park off of, on that lot off of Chapperton, and we do drive a shuttle over there for pickup and drop off. So, um, obviously, this is, you know, a big new plan, and and we would be happy to be part of it with respect to that parcel, and we would be happy even to consider some type of partnership on it. That's not, we want to develop this parcel. There's nothing bad about, uh, development in downtown Utica for us. It's a great thing. And so, I mean, I'm not against any of the concepts. It's just there would have to be obviously some, we'd really have to be working together because building, first of all, even if it was possible to build the things on the big gravel lot in the back with the environmental situations, situation there with 20 feet of trash. There's also a lot of people that are coming to park for games, which is why that was designated as parking, is that you have to have parking. And so that would have to be figured out is where where would all that parking go? So, uh, but open to partnering and discussing, as we've indicated all the way along, and as we did at the planning meeting when we brought everybody from Macomb County in to see if there's ways that they can help with making this, that was our concept, was make this the gateway to Macomb County. It's exactly what we discussed in that meeting. So, you know, I'd love to be part of that. I was willing to be on the committee and, you know, be part of this conversation going forward.
Thank you. So in your packet is the Sixth Amendment to the ground lease and the details. Basically, it grants two more years. And Linda, feel free to jump in if I get any of this wrong. With a $30,000 fee to be paid on or before January 15th of 2024 and January 15th, uh, 2025. And this extension would expire then on December 31st of 2025.
And one of the reasons I did explain in an email correspondence with Linda that, for the two years as opposed to one is, believe it or not, the FEMA floodplain maps still have not been. And you, you're involved in this correspondence, so. And I certainly wouldn't be paying all that money. Right, I certainly wouldn't be paying all the money to get these FEMA floodplain maps updated if I had no intention of developing the property. And this has been going on for now over two and a half years, working with FEMA to try to get these floodplain maps revised in order for construction to be able to happen on this site. I believe it should be happening anytime, but it's taken this long and a lot of money to get it to the point where hopefully this is going to be approved sometime soon, but I don't know for sure when it's going to happen. Um, I know the last was we had something published that we had to do a public notice of the updates to all the floodplain maps. But certainly, I wouldn't be spending my money doing that and my time doing that if we didn't have any intention of developing the parcel. So but my concern is also on timing of that, you know, hopefully, like I said, HRC will get word that this is approved here very soon, but obviously, we're not in control of the timing of this process because we're waiting on FEMA.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask Ms. Schmidt?
I I guess the difference between the two presentations are, one strictly deals with parcel C and the other one deals with most of downtown.
The parcel C is part of that, though.
Par- parcel C is part of that. But if you're only, I'm just devil's advocate, if you're only trying to deal with parcel C and nothing else, then you're limited to what you're either going to put on it or who's going to want to be it. The other proposal is literally saying that if this is all done, you have the hotel, you have a parking deck, you have the moving of that, you have some mixed use or family, um, higher density coming downtown, which downtowns traditionally are. It's just a much bigger scope versus one little piece. And I don't know if the bigger scope gets things done easier because there's more potential, or just the one little parcel that has been striking out over and over and over again. So that that's my only comment is, I mean, it's like apples and orange juice.
I talk to developers probably almost every week, for sure, every other week, about the packing plant property. And we, we usually end up talking about the grand vision for downtown, right? And almost always, uh, what, no matter what developer I'm talking to, they say you need more density, more people living around your downtown, for it to thrive, for it to to energize it, to encourage more development. You need more people living around your downtown in close proximity. You know, right now, our surrounding neighborhoods are all single-family residents, which is great. We love our, that's what I am. That's where I live, in a single-family residence. It's it's great. But if we really want to take our downtown to the next level, we need to bring more people into the general area. What are our options here? We have a request to approve a two-year extension to the ground lease. We have, on the other hand, a proposal to take over this this agreement. Very bold, I must say. We've already decided that it was prudent to postpone a vote on the development until next month, until we could figure out what's going on and consult with our attorney. It seems like that would, might be a good option with this agreement as well. With this request for the ground lease extension, I would hate to jump in and make any decisions tonight that we would regret in the future. But that's my one of, it's not seven tonight, it's one of five. That's my one of five opinion.
I will wholeheartedly agree with you. I mean, another month either way for either party means a big deal. But it also means a huge deal for us.
I I truly agree because we're postponing you, and then it's like, what if we accept this, then we have.
Like we said, all these pieces go together.
Mr. Mayor, um, for argument's sake, we approved this extension for for Dana and Andy. And say he decided to buy that lot. What are?
Well, for one, we don't know.
Yeah, so it's like the the $50,000 is great in theory, but they own the property. And so that that's, that's my question is what, if we approve this and they worked out a deal where they bought the property, because it is for sale, am I not, am I correct?
Yes, although we went through that process and it's not being marketed anymore, so our, at this point, we were planning to develop it, go back to our concept and revise that to develop our headquarters there. And other, you know, adding some mixed use.
This, would that change if it changed hands?
Because they're obviously interested in making this big movement, redeveloping the whole downtown. I mean, they're obviously.
I think it would because that would reboot the original ground lease, right? Which has a lot of restrictions on what the city can do with that entire gravel lot. So, yeah, it, all those restrictions would reboot as of January 1st. Also, again, we don't own parcel C, so we can't control if GSE would be willing to sell it and at what price, and if that would be agreeable to, uh, our friends from Host.
And my concern would be, because this is a very ambitious project. And I just, I just don't see this happening in a month. I think the Planning Commission has to look at this. So I think this could go on for a long time. So to just table what this, I don't know, I don't know if they have, I see how they correspond, but, you know, I don't know if they have anything to do with one another in that aspect.
I think in most simple terms, if we agree to enter into this, uh, ground lease extension, that pretty much takes parcel C out of play for 24 months. For sure. And that, but it also, you know, and if.
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot. So really, the gra- entire gravel lot.
But it doesn't change the fact that they own the property.
They own parcel C.
Right, correct.
But not the gravel lot.
Correct. Okay.
You have to go, well.
We're supposed to make a motion before we discuss.
Yeah, we should be, we should already have a motion on the floor before we get into any further deliberation.
No.
No, we didn't.
I'm going to make a motion to postpone this at least for a month. On both, both. We already voted on postponing the the whole development that Mike presented. I would say we propose postponing the adoption of the passing of the ground lease, the Sixth Amendment for another month.
I will support that.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi. Now we can deliberate some more. Any further discussion from council? Mr. O'Donnell, I know you have something to say.
You've got to have something to say, Brad.
No, it's, it's all been said. I'm good. Actually, really, though, council. Your question was mine, which is, okay, hypothetically, if they do sell, rumor has it, Dana, there might be a potential buyer. So, yeah, that was my, like, logistically, what might happen there, but that was answered. It's kind of like being, we're we're kind of the belle of the ball. We're we're getting fought over, so let's give them a month to to really, you know, for us to figure out who exactly we should choose, you know? I I'm being sarcastic, of course, but I think, you know, allowing people, a lot of the stakeholders to, you know, think about it, flesh things out.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd rather have something than what is there now.
Question for Ms. McGrail. I mean, the ground lease takes into account the dollar a year that we get in the lease payment on that. So if we did not approve that, what does it do for the parking lot, the field? Where does that put?
If we didn't approve.
Let's say if we didn't put the extension of the ground lease.
I mean, the ballpark would be in default on the lease.
All right, ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. We'll be revisiting this in the near future.
Okay.
Thank you, Dana. All right, department reports. First thing I'd like to mention is the downtown Utica Christmas tree lighting, which we held on. on Saturday. Thank you to everyone on council here and the two that are not present. Every council member was there. I love the support. We also had some of our other elected officials present, State Senator Michael Weber, who gave us a presentation, I think it was last meeting, State Representative Nate Shannon, our county commissioner Sylvia Groat, Judge Doug Shepherd. We also had Rupe Raj from Fox 2 News as our master ceremonies and Brian Barcheck from the Reptarium and Legacy Aquarium was our celebrity guest. It was a great night. Mr. Diamond, the DPW, just knocked it out of the park. So much hard work, I know they did. Everything was beautiful down at the park, the decorations, it was clean, it was safe. Somehow they got that tree to not dance like it has in the past. We were also blessed with some pretty good weather, too, so I think that made it easier. Our fire department, thanks for all the support there. They were very involved with getting our special guests down to the event and monitoring the fireworks, making sure everything was safe. And obviously, our police did a fine job, too. So it was just a citywide effort. A lot of the city staff was also present, tons of people, just a great event. So thank you to everybody for helping make that work. I did want to mention, because it is the holiday seasons, the office will be closed on December, I'm looking at the wrong one, 22nd, which is in celebration of Christmas Eve and December 25th, Christmas Day. City offices will also be closed December 29th and January 1st to celebrate New Year's Eve. Both of those weeks, garbage pickup will be delayed one day. So instead of the usual Thursday garbage pickups, priority will be making its rounds in Utica on that Friday, and that's for both weeks. On the same note of priority waste, I want to remind all our residents that this is the last week for yard waste pickup, this Thursday, December 14th. That will be the last yard waste pickup of the year, so if anyone does have some leaves that still need to go out to the curb, this is your last chance to do it this year. And that's all I have for reports. Does anyone else from council have anything to report tonight?
Just to reiterate what a great event it was at the Christmas Tree Lighting and personal thank you to Mayor Gus because he put a heart and soul into this, so.
Yes.
He did.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you, Gus.
It was fun.
All right, we have, thank you, everybody. We have no report from planning, assessing, or building tonight. Ms. Francis, report from the library?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. So thanks, since you ended with the Christmas Tree Lighting, I think I'll pick up right there. So our bake sale, annual bake sale, of course, I know I said this last year, but we did even better this year, so we're really excited about that. And I want to thank every single person who spent time, whether it was donating baked goods or money or just coming in to help us set up. Every little bit counts and it's, it's not unnoticed, so thank you. Moving on to what you have in your packet, there's a letter on behalf of Bill Ozdahl. His term expires at the end of this month and he is looking to hopefully be a full five-year member moving forward, if you guys so. I know that the other members are in full support of him continuing on, so we would like to hopefully have him be on there.
We would be looking for a motion to reappoint Mr. Ozdahl to the Library Board of Trustees for a full five-year term.
I will make, oops.
Is that moved?
Motion by Councilman O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Councilman Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Tell Mr. Ozdahl, congratulations. Anything else to report?
No, that is it.
I'm going to backtrack just for one second because you sparked something. I, I knew Councilman Ryan was not going to be here tonight, so I asked him for information on how the Toys for Tots drive went. And this is what I got. Our fire department collected over 1,500 toys worth over $25,000, including cash donations, and they collected enough toys to fill one and one-half ambulances. So, great job by Utica Fire. I know they, they put a lot of hard work. They did the Battle of the Bars, Steampunk won, and they also did Battle of the Schools and Utica High School won that contest, so.
I like the trophies you guys put together.
Very cool.
Those are fun.
It was fun.
Yeah.
It's not what I thought you were going to say, but. I had my own secret competition going on with City Hall, so.
Oh, yeah, and I think we kind of miserably failed.
No, we did.
You did?
Yeah. Well, I mean, not, we collected a lot of toys. I don't want to say we failed, but, but no, I had my own little-
We won? We, we collected more toys?
Yes. Councilman Ryan did, did say, I asked him that night when he came in to collect, and he said that City Hall did collect more, so.
Wow.
I wasn't going to tell you, but, you know.
See, you, you could have played that completely different. I was under the impression the library beat us, and I wasn't proud of it, but that's what I was thinking, so. Yay us, we won.
Right, yay. The kids won, right?
The kids won in the end, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Francis. Assistant Chief Plant, report from fire.
Thank you, sir, two items today. Thank you, chief. Two items today, the first of which is a request for the fire department to enter into a three-year contract for online training software. We are familiar with this company, it's Vector Solutions. We've been using them for the last four years or so. That was provided through funding from the Fire Chiefs Association in Macomb County. Their funding source dried up, they're no longer covering the fees. It's been very effective. It acts as tracking training, providing online training that we use to supplement our physical training. This was a lifesaver during COVID. The training requirements did not lighten up during that time, and we didn't want to meet in person as per guidance from the state. We are comfortable with the software, we use it on a monthly basis or sometimes more, and we want to continue to do that. Contract is for three years. There is funding, after I spoke with Mr. Paternoster, the treasurer, there is funding available. It would require a small budget amendment, which I can address separately. We have part-time staff, so it's a little bit harder to get everybody there all the time to come to every single training. So this gives us an avenue to ensure that they receive the training, keep themselves safe and efficient. We would, I would look for a motion to enter into a three-year contract with Target Solutions, also does business as Vector Solutions, using money from the fire department ambulance training accounts. Those are indicated on your AIS. And then I would request a second motion after speaking to Mr. Paternoster to amend the general fund budget, reducing the fire department meetings and trainings by $500 for this fiscal year and increasing the ambulance meeting and training by the same 500. So the funding is there, we have to jack it around a little bit.
All right, so Assistant Chief Plant is looking for his first motion to-
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Yeah, what motion was that?
Thank you.
You want me to read it?
I'll read it. Motion by Robinson, support by Torenzi.
Yep.
Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. And the second motion he was requesting was the budget amendment.
Yes, the second motion was a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, reducing fire department meetings and trainings by $500 and increasing the ambulance meeting and trainings by $500.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. And the second motion he was requesting was the budget amendment.
Yes, the second motion was a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, reducing fire department meetings and trainings by $500 and increasing the ambulance meeting and trainings by $500.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. And the second motion he was requesting was the budget amendment.
Thank you. Yes, the second motion was a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, reducing fire department meetings and trainings by $500 and increasing the ambulance meeting and trainings by $500.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. And the second motion he was requesting was the budget amendment.
Thank you. Yes, the second motion was a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, reducing fire department other state grants account and the fire department equipment purchase account. And those account numbers are indicated on the AIS.
Okay, so moved.
Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all, that's all I have, sir.
Nothing else to report tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Chief Kuzni, please report.
Good evening, mayor and council. First jet item summary I have is the sale of fixed assets. Not sure if you've seen, but one of our Chevy Tahos is finally on the roads, patrolling the city. So we're in the process of starting to get that new fleet out there. They've all been decalled and we're starting to get them all outfitted. Part of my budget presentation, when I presented the purchase of these vehicles, was to recoup some of that cost in the, in the form of sale fixed assets. So with our current fleet that's outgoing, the current Ford Explorers, we're going to repurpose, one vehicle's going to go to City Hall, one vehicle's going to go to the fire department, and we're also repurposing one vehicle to our detective's vehicle. This current vehicle's almost got about 190,000 miles on it, so we've far, far gone our monies on of that vehicle. In discussions with the fire chief and the assistant fire chief, they are requesting a second vehicle. My explanation or my discussions with them were regarding the budgetary issues, so we're going to work on something hopefully for next council meeting. So what I'd be looking at is a, I'm requesting a motion to authorize myself the ability right now to sell two vehicles, our old detective vehicle and one of our old Ford Explorer vehicles, and we're going to bring a motion for the fire department, looking for the next one at the next council meeting, set the motion for the ability to sell two patrol vehicles and the corresponding emergency equipment and deposit all proceeds into the sale fixed assets GL, which is 101, 301, 693, triple zero.
I'll make a motion to go with that.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and council. Next item summary I have is we're looking at a camera system upgrade. Just to kind of, to back up from where these funds come, came from, there was a number of months ago, there was a search warrant performed on the Cherry Blossom Spa that was over in our city, over at the, over by the library, over there. That was conducted by Comment, which is a, a Macomb County, team run by the state police. Results of that search warrant ended up shutting down that business, and there were a number of assets that were forfeited out of there. The portion that came back to the city, we received a forfeiture check in the amount of $5,000 from the, the search warrant and the subsequent arrests and the forfeiture of assets that came from there. I would be looking at using some of that forfeiture money to be able to put back into the police department. When it, when it comes to forfeiture funds, there are certain things, it can't go into the general fund, it's got to be used, put back into the enforcement and the, the protection of the community and law enforcement. One of the issues that we have at the police department is our, our current video system in our cells and in our booking room. Right now, we don't have the ability to hear sounds or record audio from our cells, and it's really one of the biggest liability issues we have, is taking in prisoners in the cell area. Working with our vendor that installed the camera system previously, they were able to quote me $1,500 for a DVR system, and that's inclusive of the DVR, the cameras, and all installation and labor costs. And this is going to modernize, give us the ability, our dispatchers the ability to not only visually watch them, but also audibly watch them, and it also streamlines our ability to burn the videos in a much more user-friendly environment. So I'd be looking for a motion to amend our fiscal year 2023, 2024 police department budget, increasing by $5,000 our revenue, our revenue account for evidence forfeiture, that's 101, 301, 659, 020 account, and increase the expenditure equipment purchase account, 101, 301, 981, triple zero, account by $1,500 for the purchase of the booking camera system by RSI Security.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, chief?
Yes, just a real quick update on personnel. We have two cadets graduating from the police academy on Monday. That's our previous dispatcher, Elizabeth D'Amink, and our new officer that we hired that sponsored himself through Mitchell Agents. So they'll be graduating on Monday and starting work as a police officer that following Tuesday. And then starting up on January 8th, we have two more cadets that we are sponsoring and sending to the academy. If you remember from last council meeting, I got approval for that. So we got them moving forward and they start the academy on January 8th, and police department will be fully staffed after they get done with their training, so we're looking forward to that.
All right.
So, that's all I got.
Great stuff, chief, thank you.
Sounds good.
Mr. Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hope everyone's doing well. I've got three things in front of you. The first one is an ordinance amendment. Going through a couple of the ordinance, I noticed this one, obviously, it's a big one, hasn't been touched in a while, but according to the Michigan Safe Water Drinking Act and the lead and copper rule overview, that all new service lines must be lead-free, and we, we had it still in there that you can use lead and galvanize. So with the city attorney's help, we had a rewrite of the ordinance stating ordinance 82, sections 8294 and 8296 updated to comply with the specifications for the new service pipe connections and curb valve installations for lead-free materials. So just looking for a motion to amend these changes as they are in your summary.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne, Ryan, Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, sir.
Next one is a big one and a very, much-needed piece of equipment. The, oh, actually, is that the right one? Yep. And it is for the purchase of a brand-new 2024 John Deere 322, 320P backhoe loader. As you know, our 2000 New Holland LB50 backhoe has been band-aided and put together. Our guys have kept that thing running for a long time, and this has been a purchase that we've, that we've needed for a while, well before I've gotten here. The money that was put aside in the budget for, which will be an addition on this, that was put aside for a new equipment, our new vehicle, for a dump, a new dump truck, those are like 18 months out right now, and the money that we have that was put in for the budget wouldn't even cover what they are going for right now. So in order to make this happen and get something that we could use right now, we do have two So in order to make this happen and get something that we could use right now, we do have two other large dumps and one smaller one, so if one goes down, we're okay. If our backhoe goes down, we're done, we'd have to rent one. We did demo a particular unit like this for the Summers Lot. Councilman Robinson happened to come to the DPW yard at that point while we were demoing, and he was pretty impressed with the demo. That was actually the demo that I was trying to get, but with the few add-ons that we needed to make it right for Utica, it almost, it basically was the same price as a brand-new one. So this is a my-deal pricing. As you can see, the build sheet is $230,000, almost $231,000, but with my deal, which is the Michigan deal, it's down to $155,319. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of, from AIS construction equipment for the 2024 John Deere 320P backhoe loader for $155,319.47 from the Street Department Equipment Purchase Account, 101-441-981000.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Trenzi, support by Sikora, any discussion?
On our council sheet here, it says purchase of 2023. Did you say it's 2024?
It is a 2024.
It says 2024.
Okay, I'm just looking.
Yeah, the title says 2024.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yep. It is a 2024. The 2023 was the demo one, when I swapped it out, so.
There's a lot of profit in these things to drop from 230 to 155.
Is this the same model bill?
This is, it's the same model, we get an extra bucket, so the bucket that was on there, we also get a flat bucket, and we have the larger stabilizers that we have on the old one, too, which we would've had to get on that one. So that's kinda what brought those prices up, it would have to gone back into the shop where they can outfit it to meet those qualifications that we wanted, so. But yes, it's the same ones, a little bit bigger and a little bit better.
Yeah, I almost filled out an application with the DPW. I was like, can I get a job? This looks fun.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Your next motion?
Okay, and because we are purchasing this from the Street Department Fund, I'm unable to trade in the old one to make a trade-in and the same line item, so the AIS Construction, they are willing to buy our New Holland for $14,000. We just have to do a separate motion because that money would go back into the water and sewer department. So my second motion is for City Council to approve the sale to AIS construction equipment for our 2000 New Holland LB50 for the sum of $14,000 to be credited to Sewer and Water Fund Fixed Assets Account, 592000693000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
And the third one for this is just now to be able to move that money, so looking for a motion for City Council to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund, Street Department budget, transferring $155,320 from the vehicle purchase account to the equipment purchase account and amend the fiscal year 2024 Sewer and Water Fund budget, increasing it by $14,000 in the sale of fixed assets accounts, with the numbers are on your summary.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Sikora, support by Robinson, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Last one is a simple one, this is a annual 2024 MDOT Annual Construction Performance Resolution Permit. Obviously, like it says, it's annual, it's for right-of-way use, for us to use and for us to be able to give allowance for private contractors that come and use it as well. So if we need to do work in the right-of-way, this covers us for the year, we just have to let them know that we're doing the work there. So just looking for City Council to approve the construction permit.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. That one, I think slipped through the cracks, it could've easily went in consent business. Yeah, okay. Anything else to report tonight, sir?
Just a little bit, I just wanted to thank Mayor and Council for all the nice comments and everything for the Christmas tree event. It was, obviously, I've been here before for the lighting, a little bit different on this side of it, so it was nice being able to get the tree and decorate it with the guys, they did a great job moving it. If you guys would've saw that, that was something, because we put the lights on it at the DPW yard, and we bring it over with the backhoe, and then finish it off here, so that was fun, and the guys enjoyed it, they really, they take pride in it, and just letting them know all the comments I've received from you and from residents, you know, obviously, that's nice to hear, and they appreciate it. We had a water main break since our last council meeting at 44089 Van Dyke, right in front of the vacant gas station. Luckily, we were able to get on scene quick enough and not lose positive pressure, be able to make the repair, and with no issues, no injuries. We are gonna leave the barricades as is right now, because restoration will happen in the spring. No use to, it's not being used right now anyway, so just to save our stone, save some money on stone, and everything else is gonna stay as it is, unless something, the owner, if something we need to do, we will be able to. We did have a construction kickoff meeting for the Davis Lift Station, so that is moving along. We have had some issues with Davis Lift Station twice already, we were back out there today, had a couple high-level alarms, we were able to mitigate it both times. I'd like to make sure our residents don't flush the flushable wipes, that does not really, they do not really flush, and they do get stuck in our pumps. That is a huge issue, especially with the Davis Lift Station right now. The new pumps that are gonna go in there are supposed to be able to handle these a lot better, but this is an old pump, and we only have one that is in service. So when we get out there, we have to bring our mobile pump to get, to help start pumping that down. So again, the flushable wipes are truly not flushable. We had some issues with Utica Park Lift Station as well, luckily no high alarm, it's just been an electrical issue, and we believe that we mitigated this, and apologized to dispatch. They did receive 100 calls an hour for about a day and a half straight, so we could figure it out. Other than that, I don't think the dispatchers liked me very much, those couple days, so other than that, that's it, thank you very much.
Thanks again for all the hard work for Christmas, too, Bill, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Panerester, report from Treasury.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have an agenda item entitled Electronic Lockbox Implementation. As you may be aware, I'm sure the water and sewer customers have all been notified on their water bills that we are consolidating our water reading from three reads a month to one read a month. What that's going to do is mean that we have one due date a month instead of three, and that means a lot of payments coming in at one time. In response to this, I am working with JP Morgan Chase, which is the bank that we deal with, to implement an electronic lockbox, so that those payments that customers make through their own online banking arrangements will go into an electronic lockbox at the bank, instead of a physical check being mailed to the City Hall. And then, once a day, we can pull an electronic file down from JP Morgan and import it into the utility billing system. It should save us a fair amount of time. I don't know exactly how many customers pay, but with online banking, I do know it's quite a few. They do so because it's a free service to them, if they use our point-and-pay service, that costs them a minimum of $2. If they write a check to us, they either have to pay the postage or bring it in, and check stock isn't cheap anymore. So that's what I am working on, I'm asking Council to authorize the implementation of the electronic lockbox, which I hope will save a lot of time in our office processing utility bill payments, and make the customers happy, too, because most of them think that their payment's coming to us electronically anyway, and wonder why it took five days to show up in their account, so.
Coming from a banking industry, I'm saying thank you, it's about time. Because I know we talked about it 10 years ago.
Well.
I will make the motion.
Support.
Motion by Trenzi, support by Sikora. Discussion, yes. This is another step forward in our efforts to increase efficiency, save people hours. Also, it eliminates some human error, right? Because we have less human beings touching these checks, and it's more of an electronic function, so it's a win for the residents, it's a win for the city staff, so great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all, we really appreciate that.
Big savings in time.
Second item is entitled Capital Improvement Funds Transfer from Fund 535. Back in 2019, the city of Utica sold the property commonly known as Riverside 175 or Senior Housing Apartments. In 2020, the council allocated a portion of the proceeds from the sale to the Utica Police and Fire Retirement System, the MERS Defined Benefit Pension Plan, and the MERS Retiree Health Funding Vehicle, with the balance to be deposited into a capital improvements account. The funds remaining after distribution to the pension OPEB funds have yet to be transferred from the Fund 535. Last month, I believe it was, we adopted a fund balance policy, and I thought it was appropriate, once we had done that, to come back to council and ask to transfer the funds from Fund 535 into the general fund, and to constrain the use of those funds for the purpose of acquisition or replacement of capital assets only. I submitted, I believe I submitted, yes, a resolution to commit the capital improvement funds, and so I am asking for council to adopt the resolution as presented. That's my first request.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The second request is for council to make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget and senior housing operating fund budget, per the memo that I attached, increasing the general fund operating transfers in account by $657,240. Increasing the senior housing operating fund account operating transfers out by $657,240. And a miscellaneous expense in senior housing operating fund, $3,600, to write off some uncollectible receivables that were still sitting on the books.
So moved.
Motion by Sikora?
Support.
Support by Trenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
One last thing, this is December, the last day to pay your property taxes and have it credited for your income tax purposes would be the 31st of December. Our offices are closed on the 29th, 30th, and 31st, that being Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We will be open the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday between Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday, so Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 26th, 27th, and 28th, so keep that in mind. Obviously, you can pay online if you want to take it to the last minute, but if you wanna pay it in the office, we're only open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday during the holiday week. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Panerester. Madam Clerk, administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to my agenda item, I just, Phil reminded me about the water billing change that we have decided to make, where the whole city will be read the third Tuesday of every month, instead of doing three separate readings. It's going to be more efficient for DPW and our city office. With the implementation of the lockbox, all of those payments coming in will be able to be processed in a timely manner, so we're really excited about that, so thank you for that. And just for any residents that are watching, their first water bill for Area 1, if your account starts with 100, is gonna be about 42 days, so it'll be a little bit larger because of that usage, but it'll even out, I promise, so. I thank Mayor and Superintendent Diamond for helping get that change made for the water billing, so. In your packet is an agenda item for IT Service Bid Award. Over the past few months, I've been working closely with Chief Kaluzny and Superintendent Diamond. We posted an RFP for IT Services, asking for a three-year contract. We have had our current IT Service Provider, SYO, since 2010, and our current contract doesn't end until November of 2025 for the Police Department and July of 2025 for City Hall. Both of our contracts do have a 90-day cancellation clause that both the Police Department and City Hall would like to utilize. The most important aspects we were looking for were 24-hour support specifically for the Police Department, since they are the 24-hour support for the city, network security, transparency, and billing and services. We did receive eight bids total, we narrowed it down to three, which were Vector Tech, Simplified Business Solutions, and Enertron. We asked them back for second interviews and whatnot, and we, after careful consideration, we decided to go with Simplified Business Solutions, as we felt it met the needs of the city while being the most fiscally responsible choice. So I would be looking for a motion to award the IT Service Bid to Simplified Business Solutions for City Hall, Police, and DPW.
I'll make a motion to enter that agreement for a three-year contract for a total cost of $63,936.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Trenzi. Discussion, how does this compare to our current cost?
Our current yearly cost with SYO, we are at about $21,168 a month, so $26,000 a year is what we're paying with them, so that in a three-year term would be $78,066.
Did we have 24-hour support with SYO?
No.
Okay, this does. New agreement, will it?
Correct, yes.
That was the main thing that I read, was the 24-hour support.
Correct.
So when was the contract up that we're in the 90 days?
Because the contract isn't up until 2025, we can give a 90-day notice to end the contract, to cancel it.
I misread that.
And simplified business does, it's all-inclusive, I'm seeing in the notes, so phone and email, all of that.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Oops, Sikora?
Yes.
Trenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, my second motion would be to approve entering into a three-year contract with Simplified Business Solutions for an annual cost of $21,312 and a total three-year cost of $63,936.
So moved.
Motion by Trenzi, support. Support by Robinson, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Didn't we just do that? That's what I said to do.
That's what I thought, too. But she has two motions, motion to award.
First, I saw.
To award the bid and then to enter into the contract. To award the bid and then to enter into the contract.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can we, I already did it separate?
We've already had one motion, so we might as well just do the second motion, but we could combine those.
Okay. Sorry.
For you.
So I have Terrencey and Robinson.
Is there a proposed motion to terminate the SYO contract or no? Because that should be voted on here, too.
Okay, that would need to be a three, our third motion, then?
Yes.
We still have to vote on that?
Yeah, we still didn't finish our.
Correct.
Right.
Second motion.
Sorry, taking notes. Okay, Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
So my third motion would be to terminate the current contract with SYO, giving a 90-day cancellation notice.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne Ryan Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything further to report, Madam Clerk?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, anything to report tonight?
I don't have anything, though.
And we have nothing from Historic District. Ms. McGrail, City Attorney, anything to share with us this evening?
Just my heartfelt appreciation for the memories that I'm on this last weekend. This is the way I didn't talk.
In case you weren't at the event, we did dedicate the Christmas tree lighting to Linda's mom, Kathy McGrail. She was a longtime city clerk on every committee in the city that you can think of, was really just an integral, your whole family is an integral part of the history of Utica, and it was our honor to be able to dedicate the event to your mom, who passed away earlier this year.
Thank you.
Linda's brother, Jim, see, this is, I'm proving how vital they are to the city, who was the city attorney before Linda, was able to get up and say a few words about their mom, and yeah, it was a beautiful time, so it was our.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for communication from the public for any item that was not listed on the agenda. Everyone will be allowed three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council for any item not on the agenda?
I only get three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Damn it.
I'm timing you.
I'm not up there yet. Linda, this is up your forte, so.
She's gonna.
You pass it around?
Oh, you want, okay.
Please, they're not all for you.
Oh, they're all different. I see the way you are. Again, Ed Van Slanbrock, Levon Davis.
I'll share with them.
So in my little light reading, going through the town ordinances, just for the fun of it, I find that we still have a prohibited language on the books. Immoral, obscene, vulgar, or insulting language is illegal in Utica. In Cohen versus California, Supreme Court ruled, there's actually been multiple cases, this is free speech. It's not violence, it's free speech. Also, because of what our town ordinances, what we basically did is we cut and pasted out of what the state had, many very common thing. The particular ordinance that we cut and pasted has been repealed during the Engler administration. We can amend our ordinances, I feel like this does not belong in Utica. That's it. Any questions, guys? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to council? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.